Welcome to Brookings County Commission meeting Tuesday, November 4th, 2025. Please start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance, so please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Go move.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any additions or corrections?
I do need to add a quick exec session, SDCL 12521 for personnel.
Okay, any other comments? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Item four on the agenda is an invitation for citizens to schedule time on the commission's agenda for an item not listed. There's a five-minute time limit per person. Anyone wanting to speak during this agenda item must sign in prior to the start of the meeting. No commission action will be taken during this agenda item. Any requested action item may be scheduled for a future meeting date. We had nobody sign in this morning, so move on to item number five. Consent agenda items, which includes minutes, travel and education requests, personnel action notices, cellular authorizations, human services report. Do I have a motion to approve?
Go move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additions or corrections? Any questions, comments? Hearing none, call roll, please.
Vanderwal.
Aye.
Post.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item six, routine business, approval of the claims. I have a motion to approve the claims.
Go move.
Second.
And motion second. Any comments? Any comments or questions? Hearing none, call roll.
Post.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwal.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B under routine business is department head reports. We start with Brian from the highway department.
Morning.
Morning, Brian.
So, a couple of routine business items here. November 3rd, the highway department started our winter hours, 7:00 to 3:30, five days a week. So, we'll be out of there at 3:30 every day. Working with the gate outfit. We're gonna get that changed. And also address the code issue, and I'll be sharing that with other department when that hit, when that gets taken place. 08 XO, the box culvert over on County Road 35, the contractor still backfilling, preparing the base and getting ready for paving asphalt on that. So hopefully that gets wrapped up pretty soon before the weather changes. Smar Avenue, cats are concrete. Anticipated to be in, to be pouring curb and prepping base for that. And then followed that with asphalt. There's an update meeting tomorrow. For you commissioners that attend those, but hopefully we get that wrapped up before the weather changes also. And then finally, on my notes here, transverse rumble strips, I'm sure maybe you guys have seen that email that I asked Stacy to send to you guys, and I also shared it with Sheriff Stanwick. Talked with Matt Bray yesterday with the South Dakota Department of Transportation. And they have a machine that can put those rumble strips in. And they would be at the intersection of our County Road 7 or 466 Avenue and Highway 14, and then also on the west side of 204th or our County Road 6 and County Road 77. He wasn't aware that they were going to charge us, and I have not heard back from the DOT, but it sounds like something the DOT would provide a service, and they are also agreeing to put a lighted stop sign on their side of that intersection at 7 and, or 6 and 77 and their 30. So they already have rumble strips on their side, and then looking at their standard plate and going around and looking at a couple of the intersections that are already have the transverse rumble strips applied. The stop ahead sign, they're roughly about 500 feet before the stop ahead signs. We're just talking with Sheriff here before the meeting is that the trees would hopefully act as a buffer. I know that there's a couple of options that were given to me yesterday by Bray. And this year, we could get the louder ones installed, whereas if we waited next year, they'd be a little quieter, but there again, it'd have to be down the road to get those quieter ones, but I think the louder ones in this case, I think Marty mentioned that you had spoken with some of the residents there. Larry, sounded like they were in agreeance to have those put in there, but those are some of the things that I've gotten options from on the DOT as far as the help they would give us and get those in to hopefully make that intersection safer. I guess, do you have anything to add to any of that, Marty?
No, I just assumed go ahead and do it now. It is talking with Brian and so forth, and the DOT is willing to do that, and we can get her done. So, I think we should go with it. That's my recommendation.
That's talking to the residents, they agreed they'd like to see them sooner than later.
I think so.
The individual that lives right next to the road on the west southwest corner was hoping they wouldn't be right by his house. If there was, if it was a little west of the trees, it would really help, so. But they agreed that sooner or later, there's still issues out there, and they truly like to see it, so.
And I know in Matt's email, he just wanted concurrent, so I guess Sheriff, if you could put that in the email and I can share that with Matt.
Okay.
I think we can get moving quicker than, than aside from waiting. And that'd be something we could get done this year if you guys are in concurrence with that.
Commission agree. There's one question. What's the difference in louder ones or the, what's it, how they're applied or?
Well, I think Matt really didn't dive into the weeds on that, but it'd be something that a contractor would have to come in and do. Whereas, you know, they have the tool in their toolbox now to apply it themselves, and I think, you know, Matt was concerned, he shared that in an email too, about, you know, the residents there and the loudness of them, but I think I really don't know the difference, to be honest, Larry.
Okay. That's a question that came from the board. What, how the difference? You'd think the louder would be more?
I think either way, something out there. I know I've just witnessed it myself, you know, people do try to avoid them, but in most cases, they see them coming. Either they move over or they do drive over them, and it does catch their attention. I think either way, having something out there would definitely help with safety.
Was, was a guy from state coming today, or?
Yes. He probably, was he on the schedule? I think, I think I told him nine o'clock.
Yeah, it's part of the nine o'clock. It's, it's part of the nine o'clock stuff, so.
And he might be able to answer that to the board on the difference between the, maybe the decibels or from my understanding, talking with Matt, it's just a shower cut on that rumble strip. You know, they, they don't traverse the whole way across the road. It's just in the wheel path of the vehicle.
Okay.
Brian, on the east side of that intersection, is there a lighted stop ahead sign?
And I discussed that with Matt too. Their standard plate does not have a illumination on the stop ahead sign itself. There is no illumination on that. It'd be only on the stop sign itself.
Okay. Is there a stop ahead sign there though?
Correct. Yes, there is.
There is. Okay.
And do we have one on the, on the west side of that intersection?
Yes.
Eastbound? Okay. Yeah. I think those rumble strips, I think it's sooner rather than later would be a good deal. Especially if there's gonna be some noise dampering with the tree rows and trees there, I think, I think it'd mitigate the the stuff, the residents hearing it, and that, I think it'd help a lot.
Yeah. I don't know, Stacy, if you can bring this up on the... There was, I noticed in Iowa and in some other counties, they, they do do paint stop ahead on the highways. I don't know if that's an option also, or is it, does that confuse people more, or there's?
I'm not sure. I guess, you know, I reached out also to South Dakota LTAP, and I consulted in the manual uniform track control devices, and I shared that same snippet that was in the MUTCD with, with LTAP, and I have not heard back from them yet. But there again, in either case, I was looking for a standard. And consulting with the DOT, they do have a standard, and I guess that's why I'm trying to lean towards being in a, within a standard.
Correct.
And in either case, the DOT doesn't have a standard for painted. They just have for the transverse rumble strips.
And this was an option that came out of the MUTCD book. This was actually where this came from, but I mean, it's a different application.
Right. Typically, I, you see, that was a lot more, you know, within a residential area, but as far as the DOT standard, which that's what we'd be following, going with the, with the transverse rumble strips applied by them. And I guess that they didn't cover any of that, but that might be a question you may ask at that time when, when they come in at nine.
Okay.
Say, Brian, do we have a methodology to identify other intersections that we should probably be looking at this on instead of waiting for a tragic accident?
Typically, and maybe Sheriff can chime in on this, but we do look a lot, you know, at our accident history, from my understanding. Is that correct?
Correct. Correct. What we did, what last year, we went around and identified stop signs, and we put the twirlies on a lot of them, and, you know, the ones that we felt had some issues, you know, like the four-way stop by Bruce and so forth, and we did put twirlies on a lot of them. I think there's probably some that probably could be replaced, but.
I just, you know, in history, in my observance, you know, a few years back, I had an accident just south of Bowes where, yeah, someone did a stop and go, not knowing that it was, it wasn't four-way. And, you know, by the time I got something else to drive, it was, that intersection was already upgraded, and that one could have been really bad. My airbags were able to save me on that one, and, but it was, you know, it's just one of those things, if we can preemptively do some of these things, that would probably be better than being reactive.
But that's the problem, is, is we're probably more reactive than we are proactive, but, you know, we, we base a lot of our on statistics, on stats and complaints. So as complaints come in, you know, we look at that intersection and determine if, yeah, something else is warranted, you know. 466, I'm glad that Commissioner, you know, Vanderwal brought that up because that, looking back, we looked at that before, and I had pictures of the ones that have went through that, and and I'm glad that we, you know, making, bringing that attention to that intersection and do that. But a lot of times, we're reactive instead of proactive on this, but again, we go by stats and plates, concerns.
Our, our stop signs are on there, if they aren't four-way or even if they are, we have cross-traffic does not stop, and little signs underneath there on those, don't we just?
Correct.
I mean, granted, you gotta read the sign, but as long as we're doing our due diligence to notify, you know, for the accidents that don't stop, or the stop and go and don't look, thinking the car's gonna go through.
Because I believe it was earlier this year, we did apply those signs on your request at that intersection.
Yeah. You, you put yours up on the county side, and I called the state, and Trevor, there's Trevor back there. We got that on our side.
Very good.
I mean, on the state side, excuse me.
Well, that's good. I, I travel that intersection, Highway 30 there every day, and boy, I see a lot of people blowing through there, almost always from the east. I see them coming through there, so we really need to do something there.
And there's a lot of increased traffic now due to the construction of Highway 28 also.
I agree. We just need to spend some dollars on this, on both those two intersections. I'd just like to ask the, the public to just slow down, and, you know, rumble strips and flashing stop signs aren't gonna fix everybody. But again, we just wanna ask the general public to stop and, and stop.
Okay, any other comments? Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Brian.
Joe from the BCOIC.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
So, we have a pretty standard update because we're coming from our slowest season going into our busiest season. So things are starting to look up as far as attendance. Year-to-date, for the archery range, we're at about 900. Gun range, we're at close to 2,200, and events, we're at over 12,000. We also, I also started adding this educational program attendance, separate from the other events, to kind of keep track of how many people are attending our community education programs. And with 12 events, we're up to 315 participants, so that's kind of another pretty sizable chunk of people to pull in that's outside of our normal events and range use, so that's been a pretty positive uptick there. And then total attendance for the year, we're at just over 15,000, so we're up 4% from this time last year to date. So, attendance in general is looking pretty good, so we like to see that. A couple of notable events that we've had in the past few months, cartridge collectors, there was 84. The Brookings County Veterans Memorial Pork Feed had 292 attendees, so that was pretty good to see. That's a fundraising event for the Veterans Memorial here in town. And then, again, our community ed programs have been gaining some traction. We've had 12 classes with 315 attendees. A couple of those have been in schools, which is really nice to have been able to get into some of our community schools and do educational programs. Upcoming things, we got, we're doing an RSO appreciation raffle, so for the RSOs who are volunteering, all active RSOs are getting put in, their name put into a hat to win a prize, and then for every four hours that they volunteer, they get their name in the hat again to kind of incentivize some more diversification in our RSO volunteering, as well as just a nice thing to do for our RSOs because, as you guys know, they're kind of the backbone of our facility. Our Christmas event will be held on 12, 17, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. It's pretty fun. If you guys have attended in the past, we have camels out there, and then we also have Casey Jensen comes out, and he's our Santa Claus. So we, and then we usually have like hot chocolate and Christmas music going, so it's just a fun community event, get people in the building. So it's, it's a pretty neat event, so we're looking forward to doing that. Hanging Christmas lights has been a busy, busy time for me at the facility. Yes. Maintenance. So we had to repair the lift station. Sorry, I bounced around there. We had to repair the lift station. That's what makes our toilets work in our facility. The control board, or whatever it's actually called, went out, so that was about $4,000 to fix. That's the first time it'd gone out. It's better than a whole new pump, because that's even more money. I did some asking around. There's really no way to avoid the lift station. It'd be nice if we could tap directly into the water, but since it's running uphill to get into the city's water, it has to have a lift station there, so you guys probably already knew that, but so that's been, that was probably the biggest repair. The archery floors were redone. There is some errors made with the floors when they're redone, so we're working on time to get them to come and redone, be re-redone, I guess you could say. So we haven't paid for those yet, and we're not going to until they're, they're fixed, so. Okay. So I already covered a couple of the upcoming. So we have a lot more opportunities for basic pistol, our enhanced concealed carry, and then also renewals coming up on the schedule. We schedule all the way out through March, so I encourage the public to check on our website. If you have your expiration coming up or you're looking to get your renewal done, we have a lot of opportunities coming up. We had a really good enhanced class yesterday. We've held some, starting on, we've held some on Mondays because we have good range availability, and we know not everybody is available on the weekends, and we had a good turnout yesterday at our class. So that was kind of a new thing that we're trying, and so hopefully we'll see some more Monday classes for those folks who can't make it on weekends. SHAPE SD, which is our state PE teachers conference, is gonna be at our facility this week. So that's a pretty large event that we're pretty excited about, so they'll be busy. They're holding their banquet and their educational conference all in our archery range, so pretty excited to have them here this week. Couple other updates that I added after I had already submitted the packet. The buildings closed on Veterans Day, November 11th. I know that county buildings are closed, but also public hours aren't gonna be open on Veterans Day as well. And then the same is for the days that the county buildings are closed on the 27th and the 28th of November. So, there will be Facebook posts, and it'll be added to our website. Ahead of that, just to remind the public that we'll be closed during that. Another exciting update that came through just yesterday is Old Ham Ramona is holding a, they're starting a trap league, and they need their kids to have HuntSafe in order to participate in the trap league, and there aren't any local HuntSafe classes going. So they're gonna do the online portion, and I'm a HuntSafe instructor, so I'm gonna do the field day for them at our facility in January, so that when the spring comes, those kids will be good to participate in their school trap league. So that's a pretty exciting thing that we're doing. Couple of other things. We continue to work with GFP and Brookings Parks and Rec for programming. That's been pretty fun. We have our GFP interns in-house, and they're working and using our facility to do educational programming, as well as we partnered with Parks and Rec for a couple of different programs. And we hired our new office coordinator, Jayden Elmal. She started on October 13th, so she's been learning the ropes and been doing a great job. Any questions?
Joe, how do you promote the events that you have out there? How's that advertised?
For our community events or for our, like, concealed carry classes?
Well, both.
Kind of, kind of both. So with the community events, I have flyers that I put in the schools for teachers to reach out and do, as well as Facebook posts. And then we also do advertising in the phone books, which is gonna start this year, or start here soon, as well as we do, for big events, we do ads in the town and county shopper, in the shopper. So most of it's Facebook, our website is how most of our events are.
Else no email promotions?
We, so we try to limit things that go out to our members for emails because we want them to actually check them. So when we send emails to our range members, it's like updates about range availability and stuff. We don't wanna be kind of like a spam email, so we do try to limit what we send out to our members, but I don't know, we could send more. It's just, everybody gets so many emails these days, we kinda want to.
I just, I question, I look at some of the events that like, ooh, I would like to have known about that, but I, you know, I'm not on social media, but
Right.
you know, if you did an email once a month
Yeah.
with events that's gonna happen, like the cartridge collectors, like, ooh.
And that's something that I've kind of been playing with, is we used to, I don't know when the last time it was sent out, there used to be like a director update that went to all members once a month. I'm thinking about getting that started again, so that everybody that's active, has an active email with our facility, will then get an email that's kind of the director's update that will just give you a month spell out, so. If you think that'd be a good idea, I was already kind of thinking about that, getting that up going. That's only one additional email from, I think that's a good idea.
Okay. Any more questions?
Good numbers, Joe. Good to see the people going through there. Thank you.
Yeah, that's awesome. Thank you.
Thanks for your update. Lori from finance.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
The only thing I have this morning, I had a township officer stop in the other day with an idea question. Last year, the year before, Kim started adding onto our website the township paperwork, things like that. There's a section on our county website. And she wondered if perhaps we could add either a township website, a link to each township website, or put the minutes of the township, which I think would get a bit much for Stacy's office to keep putting that kind of stuff on, but I think maybe a link to each township wouldn't hurt. That way, people could read the minutes, look for announcements, those kind of things. Maybe Kelly's interested in what is Aurora Township doing, that our township could be doing, things like that. A place that would be easily accessible to look for, for those kind of things, so when Sean gets back, I'm gonna talk to him about that, but I think maybe a link, if they can come up with their own website, put a link in our township section for that. So she wanted me to bring that forward, so. There we go.
All right.
That's it. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
Marty, you got two minutes, or you need 20? Yeah, that's what I was waiting. I was hoping to get to.
I'll be quick. Just.
Thank you.
With the solar stop sign, I have ordered it and have it delivered to the county shop, and the sign guy, I call him the sign guy. and the sign guy, I call him the sign guy. Well, we'll put it up and so forth. I don't know when it's going to come, but it is ordered. Just, just to talk about traffic a little bit, is probably, this is probably one of the falls, I've had the most complaints on stop sign violations, not even before the accidents, is that it's just, especially in the northern part of the county. And Brian just touched on it too, as you know, as twenty-eights close, so there's a lot of residents up there that are not used to dust and traffic, that they're sneaking down county roads or township roads or whatever. So it's just, this has just been a bad year for, for complaints, you know, because with all the road construction and different, different things. So what I'm glad is, I'm glad that, that when we do look at these intersections and look at stuff that, that, you know, that we all kind of talk about it and get things done. So I appreciate the commission and going forward with this and Brian and Trevor with DOT. It's just, it works a lot easier when we all can come up with a solution. So I thank you guys for that. Just quickly for the jail, we have fifty inmates in there at the present time. The jail's staying busy, just a lot of activities with football and so forth. I have a lot of overtime, but, but most of it's reimbursed. We try to help SDSU out as much as we can, so I have guys that work football games, and then they want extra help at soccer games and basketball games and everything. And the athletic department pays for that service to help them out. So that goes in back into the general fund and so forth. So if you see that I have a lot of overtime, a lot of that's reimbursed. I have a hundred and four participants on twenty-four-seven. There is forty-two come in twice a day, five on remote breath test, four on SCRAM. I have twenty-four on UAs, so twenty-four-seven area continues to stay busy. So I'll, I'll leave it at that if you guys have any quick, any quick questions? Okay, thank you.
I know, before we get, just as it gets to nine o'clock, I think I'm going to give Bob Hill a call, he's part of one of the items at nine o'clock.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Bob, we will be with you here shortly. We're going to, we have one item before the ordinance.
Yes, ma'am, I'll put it on mute.
Thanks.
Okay, item number seven on the agenda is a public hearing in action to approve a package off-sale liquor license for Skyview Junction. Do I have motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. I would now open the public hearing. Any proponents that would like to speak to this item, please come forward. Any proponents that would like to speak?
I'm Corey with Skyview Junction, I applied for this.
Could, could you push the microphone there?
Sorry.
There you go.
I'm Corey Stufel, I applied for this license. That was something new that was made available. I've noticed that several convenience stores in Brookings and I noticed in Vaga have off-sale liquor. I think it would be a good addition for extra income as everything is tight. I just think it would be a good deal for the business.
Okay. Any other proponents that would like to speak to this item? Any opponents that would like to speak? Any opponents that would like to speak? I would now close the public hearing. Any comments from the board? Any comments from the board or staff? Any concerns, Sheriff?
I'm, I'm okay with it.
One quick comment from the finance office. Skyview Junction already holds an on-sale liquor license in Brookings County, and they also already hold an on-off-sale malt beverage license. The fee associated with the package off-sale license is five hundred dollars a year, and all of that money stays with the county. If the board approves this package off-sale license, Brookings County would still have three remaining off-sale licenses. So a public notice has been published in all of the legal newspapers as well.
All right, any further comments? Hearing none, call or roll, please.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item B on the agenda is a second reading, public hearing in action to approve ordinance number twenty-five dash zero-seven. An ordinance providing for the amendment of ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash zero-one, amending Article Four District Requirements, Chapter four point zero-seven, Transmission Pipeline Risk Reduction Overlay District, Section four point zero-seven, point zero-five, point zero-two, Planning Zone, Liquid Pipelines. Do I have motion to approve?
No move.
Second.
I have motion and a second. I will now open the public hearing. Any proponents that would like to speak to this item? Any proponents? Hearing none, any opponents that would like to speak? Any opponents that would like to speak? Hearing none, I would now open to the board for any comments or staff.
This is, this is Bob Hill, I'm online, I'm out of town. The only thing I'd like to say is, eighteen February this year, the county commission passed a resolution establishing a CO2 Pipeline Advisory Committee. We met five times, we feel we had a consensus of the committee on the pipeline, so we submitted it to the planning and zoning board, and of course you got the staff report in front of there. So that's the only comments I had.
Okay, any comments from board members that were on the committee?
Yeah, I guess I would just want to thank Bob and the committee that I was member of. They did pretty good work of listening to all concerns of all parties involved, and I think we have a fairly equitable plan that will navigate all the pitfalls that you could fall into, into this, this situation. So I, I think it's a good thing that meets the needs of the people and still provides different avenues, so.
Okay. Any further comments? Call the roll, please.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item C?
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Bob. Item C, South Dakota Department of Transportation Discussion on Safety Concerns at Intersections in the County. If you would like to come forward.
Hi, I'm Trevor Lambert with Brookings DOT.
Discussion is basically a couple of intersections within the county we've been looking at, and I believe Sheriff talked with you. Do you have anything you can add to what you've taken from those intersections, or?
So from the intersection of Highway thirty and Highway seventy-seven, I've addressed the concerns to my supervisors, and I've heard nothing back yet on that. With the intersection on Highway fourteen, coming south from Bruce, same thing on that one, haven't heard anything, but I have addressed everyone's concerns. So if you guys have more concerns, I'm more than happy to take them down and relay the message on.
Okay, I think, you, you got here just at the tail end of our discussion, we had some discussion on some lights that are being ordered, some lighted stop signs, rumble strips. Brian talked to Matt Bray up in Watertown, and they're going to be installed, but I didn't know, is there anything that you could suggest that would be a benefit also?
No, I think the lights, the rumble strips, the amount of additional signage we have out there, I think that was, that's probably the best we can do. Obviously you can't, you can't tell drivers to do it better, because who knows if they're going to listen, but for signage-wise, and I think what we have out there is, is good, but I'm open to hear any, any different options.
Right. I found an option, I don't know if you've seen this within the state, is, is this an application for rural, or is it more residential, or?
That one, I believe, that one I think is rural, but I could be wrong on that. I can, can I get a copy of that and I can, or get a photo of that?
I mean, this, this just came out of the MUTC manual. I'm just saying, the, the stop head painted on the roadway is, you think those are?
Probably wouldn't hurt, wouldn't hurt to put it in.
Okay. I know I've seen them in other states, and there's a few townships that, or counties that do do this. I just wanted to make sure we're, we're not doing something we shouldn't shunt.
No, if it's in the MUTCD, we, we follow that pretty, pretty closely. So we take, we take portions of what's in there and put it in our state maintenance manual.
Is there any questions from the board you'd like to ask Trevor?
I don't, I just want to thank you, Trevor, for coming today and for addressing these issues, and we'll keep following up with it to see these things through. Thank you.
Yeah, and then at the end, I can give you guys all my business card too, so that way, if you have any concerns, you can just feel free to give me a call, so.
Just a sec, Sheriff has a question.
I don't have a question, I just want to, I just want to thank Trevor. At our last commission meeting, when we brought up the signs and so forth, and I called Trevor, he had listened to the recording of this, and I'd already called, you know, Matt and about those concerns. So I just, I'm, I'm giving you a good old boy, Trevor. Trevor is really easy to work with. And also what DOT helps us out a lot on the interstate is that, you know, with, with the shortage of troopers and my guys and stuff, you know, if there's debris and stuff, a lot of time Matt hears that on his radio and sends one of his guys to clean it up. So I just appreciate that, that partnership that we got with the DOT, so thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trevor.
Okay, Marty, did you have anything? Marty, do you have any more for department head report? Okay. Moving on to item number eight, regular business. Action approve agreement number twenty-five dash eighty-one, a food service contract between Brookings County and Correct Choice, Inc., for Detention Center food services. Do I have motion approved?
No move.
No move.
Second.
I have motion and a second. Any comments? Any comments from the board or staff?
The bids were approved earlier this year, so this now is just the contract with them that will begin January one, right? Yeah, so.
Okay. Austin, you good with the contract? Okay, thank you. Any further comments? None, call or roll, please.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B, action approve agreement number twenty-five dash eighty-two, a Brookings County Detention Center inmate housing contract between Brookings County and Kingsbury County. Do I have motion approved?
No move.
Second.
I have motion and a second, any comments? Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carried. Item C, action approve agreement number twenty-five dash eighty-three, a Brookings County Detention Center inmate housing contract between Brookings County and Mooney County. Do I have motion approved?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have motion and a second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carried. Item E, action approve agreement number twenty-five dash eighty-five, an application for occupancy right-of-way of county highways made by Isaiah Fuller in Eureka and Brookings Townships. I have motion approved.
No move.
Second. I have motion and a second. Any comments? Any questions? Anything more? Just, and the, the price is still?
I left the price the same.
Yeah. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carried. Item E, action approve agreement number twenty-five dash eighty-five, an application for occupancy right-of-way of county highways made by Isaiah Fuller in Eureka and Brookings Townships. I have motion approved.
No move.
I have motion and a second. Any comments?
Yeah, I would like to make one clarification, this is Brookings Dual Rural Water.
Oh, okay.
So just note that, and this would be to feed a couple of new residents on four-hundred-and-seventy-first Avenue in Brookings Township, so it'll be along County Road seventy-seven. So just, just to clarify, it is Brookings Dual Rural Water.
Okay. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carried. Item F, action approve a thousand-dollar donation to the Christmas Kids and Cops Program. Do I have motion approved?
No move.
Second.
I have motion and a second, any comments?
This is an annual, annual request for this group. The county has given the one thousand dollars to the program for several years now. There is budget available in our public relations line for this as well.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, call or roll.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, action, item G, action to approve a retail on-sale liquor license for Cuzman's LLC, DBA, the boathouse. Do I have motion to approve?
No move.
Second.
I have motion and a second, any comments?
The only comment that I have is, all of these in front of you are the annual renew, renewals for the entities here in Brookings County. They all go in effect January one, twenty-twenty-six, and expire December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six.
Okay. Looking forward into these, Sheriff, is there any issues with any of the businesses?
No.
All right. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carried. Item H, action approve a package off-sale liquor license and a retail on-sale liquor license for Dakota Shores LLC, which is the wagon wheel resort. Do I have motion to approve?
No move.
Second.
I have motion and a second, any comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carried. Item I, action approve a retail on-sale liquor license for SVK Properties LLC, which is Midway Place. Do I have motion approved?
No move.
Second.
I have motion and a second, any comments? Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carried. Item J, action approve a retail on-off-sale wine and cider license, a package off-sale liquor license, and a retail on-sale liquor license for the Brookings Country Club. Do I have motion approved?
No move.
Second.
I have motion and a second, any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Item K, action approve a retail on-sale liquor license for Skyview Junction LLC. Do I have motion approved?
No moved. Second.
Have motion in a second, any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign, motion carried. Item L, action to approve a retail on-off-sale wine and cider license for Good Roots Farm and Gardens LLC. Do I have motion approved?
No moved. Second.
Have motion in a second, any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign, motion carried. Item number nine, Commission Department Director's Report.
I did hand out your, uh, hard copy of the twenty twenty-six calendar for each of you to have, so we're, as we, um, get closer here to year end and moving into twenty twenty-six. The ten county meeting agenda is also included with my report in the packet. I believe I've RSVP'd for all of you to attend, it's next Wednesday, November twelfth. It's at the Silver Creek Events, uh, Center, it's west of Madison, I think it's just west of the, um, golf course as you head out of, of town to the west of Madison. That starts at noon, uh, next week. I did attend a preliminary meeting with Kristen Zimmerman, she's the Park and Rec. Director for the City of Brookings, along with some SDSU staff in the landscape architecture program. Michael Schulte, the Volga City Administrator, was there as well. Just some preliminary discussions regarding the possibility of a bike trail that would run from Volga to Aurora. Right now, like I said, just kind of a very, you know, preliminary discussion, but looking at having this as po- as a possible project for SDSU students in that landscape architecture program, um, as a, as a spring project for them. So, as, as, as I learn more, I will continue to keep the board updated on that. The museums newsletter was included with my report. We did get, uh, a compliance filing, the as-built drawings for, from Excel Energy. That was submitted to the PUC, so that information, I believe I handed that out to everybody this morning. Upcoming dates, next Tuesday, the eleventh offices will be closed, uh, in honor of the Veterans Day holiday. Next Wednesday, as I had mentioned, the Sioux Valley Commissioners Association or that ten county meeting at noon down in Madison. I will be in Pierre next Wednesday and Thursday, so I will not be able to attend that with, with all of you, so I'll maybe have to talk amongst yourselves as far as getting down to Madison. The Durango is going with me to Pierre, so you'll, you'll have to drive yourselves. Um, next Tuesday, I also did a handout, uh, this morning, the Brookings County four-H recognition event. I got this, uh, after the, after the packet was done, so it's Tuesday, November eighteenth. So, in two weeks from today, that event, uh, starts about five o'clock, it's out at the BCOAC. You do have to RSVP by next Tuesday, so if you want, um, to do that, or if you want me to, if you know you plan to attend that, I can RSVP for you. Any thoughts on that? Anybody know they plan to go?
I RSVP'd already.
You did, okay.
I haven't RSVP'd yet, but I'm planning tentatively to go.
Okay.
That's.
Yes, yeah, all of you?
You said the eighteenth?
Yeah, it's the next, it's in two weeks, the same day.
I'm a mayb- I'm a maybe.
Okay. Um, other than that, then just looking out a little bit further ahead, uh, end of November, offices are closed Thursday and Friday for, for Thanksgiving, November twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. Um, I'm, I don't have any firm information yet, but the date for the Chamber's Ag Appreciation Banquet is December second. Probably at the next meeting I'll be, or even maybe before that, I'll be needing to know if anyone plans to attend that, and whether or not we get a table and whatnot, so otherwise, then it's just a few extra days, um, out into December. So, that's all I have, unless you have questions for me.
Okay, thank you. Item ten, State's Attorney's Office Report.
Yeah, good morning, Austin Oxner, I'm filling in for State's Attorney Nelson. Uh, Dan is out in New York right now for a special training event that he had signed up for there. Uh, one of the things that he had asked me to share with the commission, I think it was, uh, a letter that was forwarded as well to all of you, but it's from the South Dakota Department of Corrections, and it's related to the diversion fiscal incentive program. This is a program run by the state and counties who participate and have youth who would typically be filed into juvenile court for either delinquency or children in need of supervision petition, so delinquents or chins cases. For each of those, that is referred to an approved diversion program, and who successfully completes that, the county's reimbursed seven hundred and fifty dollars, and so I do have a check that we'll be turning over, uh, to finance today, but that's for twenty-seven thousand dollars awarded to Brookings County from the Department of Corrections through that program. Our youth diversion program is, uh, an opportunity for our individuals who would otherwise be coming into court to receive some services, typically through Boys and Girls Club, but we do have, uh, some other nonprofits, depending on the case or the situation. I think it's important to highlight or to note, not every juvenile, uh, will qualify for diversion, so if this is a juvenile who is a habitual offender and who we repeatedly see, or a juvenile, uh, with a serious offense, then they're not gonna qualify. But for juveniles who, uh, you know, might be committing some of these smaller crimes, you know, maybe it's, uh, truancy, or maybe they get into a fight outside of school, uh, maybe they steal something from the gas station, these are youth who, uh, we can keep out of the formal criminal justice system, still provide them with supervision and with a program and incentives, uh, to hopefully help them and to better them. And then a lot of that is done, like I said, with area nonprofits, so we're pretty fortunate here in Brookings County to work with the Boys and Girls Club. Lot of communities either don't have those resources in place to utilize, and then they either don't do diversion in those counties, or, uh, the State's Attorney's Office is left to run their own diversion, and some of those smaller counties, that looks like the, the State's Attorney going out to the schools to meet with these kids, and, uh, it's not an ideal setup or situation to be in. So, we're very fortunate here in Brookings that we have these community partners and these nonprofits that we work with. Not every community has that kind of, has the resources or the buy-in, but we do, and again, um, this is, uh, gives these kids who often don't have a, a positive social environment, or, you know, maybe it is a one-off, but gives them an opportunity to have some positive influence in their lives, maybe have a mentor, receive counseling, uh, restitution can be ordered as part of these programs, so there's still a way to ensure that if there is a victim, a victim is made whole, but also that we focus on, uh, what's bringing these kids into trouble, and how do we prevent that? And then, and for the more serious cases, of course, they are, they're gonna come into the traditional, um, juvenile system. But again, our participation in the last years amounted to twenty-seven thousand dollars, so, uh, it's a, a great thing for Brookings County.
Any comments from the board? I'd like to thank you for the detailed report, it was very good. Moving on, item number eleven, Commissioner reports and discussion items. Commissioner Vanderwall.
Thank you. Uh, on Wednesdays, I've been attending the Samaria Avenue Project meeting, uh, meetings, and then last week, on Tuesday, we had our department evaluation, department head evaluations, and then the road tour. I just wanted to say on the road tour, thank you, that is always a, a real good learning experience, uh, to attend that, so thank you for those that put that together, Brian.
Mr. Post.
Uh, other than the road tour and the department head evals, nothing to report.
Okay. Commissioner Miller.
Okay, uh, again, yeah, the department had reviews on the twenty-eighth, the, the county road tour, and Brian, I'd like to say thank you for that, for the snoobies, that I know nothing about the roads and whatnot, it was very informative, uh, enjoyed that immensely, I learned a lot, so thank you for that, and then yesterday, attended the Zoom for the South Dakota Counties, so.
Commissioner Hostler.
Yeah, so, uh, on the twenty-first, attended merger board CEO search meeting, um, a member of the search committee for the CEO for the merged organization that's, uh, happening here, uh, in the Brookings region, and they have kicked off that, uh, search, um, so we are actively accepting resumes and that for the new CEO for that merged organization. On the twenty-second, yeah, and attended out at the new restaurant, Damaselli's, I hope I said that right, uh, a, um, new city personnel meet and greet, uh, was able to meet, uh, new Assistant, uh, Chief of Police, uh, new Assistant Fire Chief, and new assistee, Assistant City Manager. I was able to visit with them, uh, kinda get their backgrounds and their, um, their insights, and kinda where they see their positions, uh, and I wanted to welcome all of them to our community. On the twenty-third, uh, attended the merger board meeting, of course, we're, we're doing that, uh, uh, every two weeks until we can get the merged organization up and running. Of course, I touched on, we've opened the CEO, uh, and is accepting res- uh, resumes for that. They're also doing, going through branding and, uh, and taking public comment and input for, uh, all sorts of naming and, and that, um, uh, for that organization. On the twenty-eighth, uh, of course, the department had reviews, and then the road tour, and then that evening, attended a, uh, meet and greet, uh, uh, our Attorney General Jackley was in town out at the Research Park. Uh, I went up there with, uh, several community members, uh, pretty good turnout, uh, up there. On the twenty-ninth, I was honored to be able to go down, uh, Sioux Falls every year, they have a law enforcement appreciation, uh, down in Sioux Falls, uh, um, the chamber and, and that, it's a big fundraiser for, uh, scholarships, uh, I was able to attend that, and, uh, hear from some of our local, uh, state and state leaders, uh, speaking through there. The keynote speaker unfortunately was not able to attend in person, but, uh, um, was able to, uh, Zoom in, and that was, uh, Director Holman with the Border Patrol, he zoomed in and addressed the crowd of close to two thousand, uh, to honor law enforcement, and that was, uh, very interesting to hear his insights on that. I promise I'm about done. On the thirtieth, uh, attended the Research Park Board meeting, uh, with some, some new prospective, uh, companies and businesses that are looking to come to Brookings, uh, and, uh, set up shop in the Research Park, it's some exciting things coming down the, down the track with that. And then last night, I attended, uh, the city informational meeting, uh, that was held at the Brookings High School, uh, for their proposed, uh, uh, new police department and dispatch center. You know, of course, there, um, there's been public, public, uh, input to find out where they want to put, uh, they brought it to the community to where they want to put their new police department and that. They had a couple sessions for that, uh, last night, I was able to attend the six o'clock session, there was about twenty people there, but there was a lot of good, uh, um, community members involved, and, um, a lot of, a lot of questions raised, and, uh, and brought to the city, the city commission, the police department, and, uh, and then also the, the architect firm, uh, based out of Colorado that is, they kinda helping, uh, design that, so, um, that's an ongoing, uh, gonna be an ongoing conversation to find out more about that, and that is my report.
Thank you. On the twenty-eighth, also did department head reviews, um, then we went on the road tour, I'd like to thank Beta for the transportation around the county, uh, it's great to get out and see the projects at the, um, highway shoppers, and the crew had been working on this summer, and to see the bridges and, and so forth. Later on, after the road tour, I was fortunate to be asked to judge the office decoration for Halloween, and the congratulations to the Equaliz- Equalization Department for, uh, they won, and, uh, for all those that participated, so, kind of a fun deal, and then the kids were coming in to do their trick-or-treating, so. On November first, uh, I attended the Bruce Fireman's Volunteer Supper over there, benefit, they're trying to raise some money to buy some additional equipment for some of their members. And then the next morning, on November second, I went down, attended the Sinai Volunteer Fireman's Dinner, uh, great soup and sandwich, uh, dinner there, and, and good conversation. With that, that concludes my report. Move on to item number twelve, is executive session, according to South Dakota codified law, one dash twenty-five dash two, parentheses, one, personnel, do I have motion to enter?
No moves. Second.
Have motion in a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pull the same sign, we are in executive session.
Thank you.